Speaker, are you ready? Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. It is July 8th. Would everybody please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of our prior minutes for the June 24th meeting.
Speaker, motion.
Who is that?
That's Brady.
Thanks, Alan and Ed. All right. Is there any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And a couple of announcements. Rocking on the River is happening on Saturday, the 27th, from 3:00 to 8:00. It's a really fun town-sponsored event at our waterfront park. There'll be ice cream and iced tea from the Rhine Cliff Fire Department and a band and all kinds of fun things, so please join us. Also, today was the opening day of our town rep camp, and I cannot tell you how many compliments we've gotten about how the pool and the campgrounds and the playground looks. And I want to thank Elaine Fernandez and Chrissy Amy and Catherine Lestella and all of our staff, Bobby and Ed, for all of the hard work. I think staffing the pool and the rep park with grownups who can do a job, and I don't mean this disparagingly, you know, it shows all the difference. So the place looks fantastic, so I want to say thank you to our staff. Does anybody else have anything to announce?
Yeah, we had an open house and pool that was on Rhine.
Yeah.
We had around 200 people there, kids and adults. You got your thing. I gotta write names down. Anyway, there were something like 100, around 100 children. And 43 residents, 13 non-residents, and 57 people that weren't in our computer systems. So it was a very big success. Everybody was lucky.
I think everybody was really happy, and we should maybe, you know, think about doing it on a regular scheduled basis throughout this.
Yeah, and then the new flats as well.
Yep. Thank you.
We liked it.
Are we gonna stay in that, or?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll talk to the chief about it.
Okay. You know, I'm going to go a little out of order. We have a former supervisor here who'd like to speak with us.
Is that committee report now, or is that later?
I'm gonna take a former supervisor who also has to go to a fire department meeting, Mr. Flyer.
Are you here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Evening. I'm Dennis McGuire. I'm here this evening representing American Agent Rhinebeck, where I'm commander. That's one of my hats, so. I'm just talking to the supervisor about we had a funeral last week for Walton Nestle up in the church, Lutheran church up on that.
Stone Church.
Stone Church. The cemetery is in deplorable condition. And when I say you can make hay up there, the hay is above your knees. The mortuary up there, you can't even see the bricks. Somebody come over and mow around the area where we put Mr. Nestle's final resting spot. And it was very disrespectful for the people that are way up there. And the history of that church is unbelievable for this town. So having said that, I know the procedures of ending up taking care of and caring for our cemetery is when we had this down here. So I just wanted to bring in somebody's attention because the family was very upset. I mean, even where they mowed down, it should have been raked, but it was all this dead grass and slaying there. So I just wanted to bring in attention to the town board, and I know the procedure that you have to go through, so. I want to thank you also for sticking me up here, because now I gotta put my other hat on, to be a fire chief, so.
Well, thank you for holding your hats.
All right, thank you for your time.
So just so you know, I am aware of this, and just for the public, there's state law mandates that a town or municipality has to take over a cemetery that's been abandoned by a church. And we expect that it could be abandoned by the church, and I will reach out to someone I talk with at the church to let them know that you made us aware of this and see if it's time. And just make sure Joe, I know Joe has your contact information, but I'll follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, yes.
Have a nice time. Thank you.
Are there any committee or liaison boards?
Yeah. On that note, so what I wanted to bring up was the environmental committee. We had someone come in to talk to us about microhydro in the area and taking potentially old dams and putting in hydroelectric. Now, it was a very general and broad conversation, so it doesn't necessarily fit to get into the details of that here. But what was pertinent in it that I think is really important for everyone to know is that governor's committed for us to be 70% renewable energy by 2030, which gives us 11 years to find 70% of our energy sources from renewable resources. And so it does mean that things like solar, things like microhydro, you know, any alternatives you can come up with, geothermal, are gonna be very important in developing fully during this next 11-year period. So that really felt like the important thing to share with you all today.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have two presentations. The first is Emily Vale, who's the executive director of the Hudson River Watershed Alliance. She's presenting to us on a community resilience building workshop. Hi.
Hi.
Emily, how are ya?
Great, thank you.
I know. We thought Andrew might be coming, but I think he has a new baby.
That's great. So Evan is doing well, but rather than having Andrew Peck, my name is Emily Vale.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me. So I'm here to present on a community resilience building workshop that we're offering. So the Hudson River Watershed Alliance is a regional nonprofit that works to help municipalities and watershed groups improve their local water resources. And we've been partnering with the Nature Conservancy to offer municipalities a one-day community resilience building workshop. I'm quite proud. And this is one day where we get a number of people together in the room, municipal boards, municipal staff, people who really know the towns, bring together groups of towns who have shared interests, and talk about strengths and vulnerabilities to climate change, in particular, infrastructure, social, and environmental assets that might be at risk, and what there might be opportunities to do to help improve those going forward. So the focus is on flooding, but we've taken into account sea level rise and extreme weather, storms, heat, et cetera, wind, et cetera. So we've been doing this with a number of different municipalities, and we're hoping to bring a workshop to the Northern Dutchess region, including Rhinebeck, in the February of 2020.
Thank you. I had a meeting before this with Andrew Peck and a couple of other people to hear this, and we thought it would be a great idea, so I wanted to bring it before you. And, you know, we would partner with, I think we said Red Hook and Clinton.
Myland.
Sort of our Northern Dutchess Alliance partners. But, you know, it's no cost, but just a really great thing for us to do, and it sort of builds on the FEMA training that we've done with the county. It's important that we, you know, even look at the trees that are dying and what we need to replant with. But I'm hoping you'll all be supportive of this, and we can schedule it for the winter.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's be in touch. Thanks for coming.
Great.
We have another presentation from the Friends of the Cemetery. Nikki Hager.
Yes, I am. Yeah, Nikki Hager, I'm the president of the Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery. Not for proper, it was formed some six years ago, 2013. The government's strong, the same board of directors, same strong people. Initially, initially, and still is, it's the purpose of something, the CPR of the cemetery, the conservation, preservation, restoration. And along those lines, the last several years, we've really worked very, very hard to come up with ideas and programs for restoration of that wall in all nine, which should now complete. We've built.
Is it actually completed?
It's completed.
Is it reseated?
The stone is in there. It's either receiving it. It's built 18894, we built.
It looks beautiful.
It's designed. The blue stone is in there.
Yep, looks beautiful.
Anyway, along the lines of doing, you know, since fundraising for that, and one of the fundraising events we had was to come up with $20,000 to now prepare to give to the town as part of the course of the building.
Fabulous.
So there's that check from the Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery. We're gonna continue our mission. We do plenty of other things we're doing with the beautification, restoration, but reforestation too, we're replanting a lot of trees. And Nathalie Ritter, in particular, she's very interested in us, and they're really taking a hand in helping to create a good image there.
Well, and it's noticed, and I said we've been getting a lot of compliments about the pool, probably only shadowed by the stone wall. People are so thankful. It's a gateway into our town and village, and histories, you know, cemeteries are an important part of our local history.
Well, we're also reaching out to the young folks who are the ones in high schools that have.
The indirect committee.
The indirect committee, all those kids there coming to help with this spring cleaning, the vaulting. We've done a seminar on restoration of the stones, and some of our members are participating, so we still work on those stones, their dams and everything like that. But the history part is very, very important, because there's high school kids involved, because there's so much going on in that cemetery.
I agree. Well, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. Resolution 20... Did somebody say something? Okay. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2019-174 for budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-175 for preliminary accounts payable, abstracts, 49 checks totaling $50,000, not $50,963.21. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. No capital checks. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-176, a letter supporting the hire of a coordinator for the Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council, approving submission of a grant application to pay for the coordinator and committing to a contribution of $1,100 over two years for the coordinator. May I have a second?
Seven.
Thanks, Cara. The Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council is what we refer to as the Hudson Water Seven. It's the group that the mayor and I founded with Riverkeeper, comprised of the seven local municipalities that represent all of the residents that get their drinking water from the Hudson River. That is Rhinebeck Town and Village, Asofas, Lloyd, Hyde Park, Poughkeepsie, City and Town, and I think that's it, that's seven. And we band together to share information about our water stations and also to get grants. And in being together, we are eligible for more grant money. One thing that the council has decided is that we would like to get a grant to get a coordinator, and the coordinator would be doing additional mapping and grant writing for us. So the contribution that we would have to make is $1,100. That's $550 over the next two years. So I'm asking you to allow me to sign the letter that approves submission for the grant. And if you agree with this, at the next meeting, I'll come back with a resolution to transfer, you know, to allot the funds for our portion of this. I think it's a small and meaningful contribution to make for, you know, helping to protect our drinking water.
Second word, a small portion.
Yeah. It's really worthwhile, and I can't, again, thank Dan Shapley and Rebecca Martin of Riverkeeper enough for all of their help and guidance. So any further questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved, and thank you. Oh, Resolution 2019-177. I'm sorry, Emily, I should have done this before. A letter in support of the Nature Conservancy application for the New York State Department, DEC, Hudson River Estuary Programs Local Stewardship Planning Grant to complete Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool. You were staying for this as well?
Yeah, this is to do the...
Let me get it on the floor first. I make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Come on up and tell us your questions.
So we currently have funding to do the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool and the Community Resilience Building Workshop in Rhinebeck Town and Village, and we're hoping to do the same program for the other communities in the Hudson Seven, so that all municipalities in the Hudson Seven will have the same information about their infrastructure and assets.
Terrific. Is there any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Resolution 2019-178, fee increase for planning and zoning attorney. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. This is a sort of mea culpa. At the last meeting, we approved a letter of agreement for John Lyons, our planning board and manus attorney, for 2019. John had personal issues at the beginning of the year and wasn't able to submit it to us, and in it, he asked for a rate increase. At the last meeting, I mistakenly, without going over my notes, we had planned for a rate increase. The only thing that was missing was the letter of engagement, so I'm asking you now to improve the rate increase to $165 an hour. It's $15 an hour over his rate, and it brings Kimberly's rate up to that. They haven't had an increase for four years. So we had talked about this during budget tournament. It was a missing link because of the late submission of his letter of engagement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-179, Recreation Department Summer Personnel Salary Increase for Designated Head Lifeguards. May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Alan, what's this about?
Basically, the idea is to have these two individuals perform as head lifeguards. We've had issues covering the pool. In the past years, we had to close the pool because we didn't have lifeguard coverage. And this is a way, these two individuals have taken on some leadership responsibilities in lieu of some other people that we thought might do it, but they're not.
Are these two people available throughout the whole summer? Are they leaving early for college, or will we be able to keep the pool open for Memorial Day, I mean Labor Day?
I believe so.
Or hoping.
Well, it's all yours.
Yeah, I know, you never know. We're working hard to.
By the way, there was an incident at the pool where some allegedly teenagers came to the pool after hours.
Should we stick to the thing we have on the floor first?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. That's all right. Is there any further discussion?
He's trying to kill two birds.
Yeah, I know, and I wouldn't let him.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll put that under discussion.
Yes, I'll mention.
Looking for a motion for Resolution 2019-180 for our recreation refund request. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. What's the deal with this, Alan?
I'm not totally familiar, but the idea was they paid for swim lessons, and now the child wants to be, the teen wants to be $75.
That's fine. There's also somebody who's paying, lives in Clinton, who has been paying residential rates, so that will be taken care of as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-181, awarding a modified bid for painting Town Hall. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Cara.
Sure. The windows, Hopson's been finishing up installing the windows on the outside. We did not have the painting requirement for that, but it needs to be done, needs to be sealed before the rain starts falling. So when he goes, modified his bid and added that to it, paint for the hall, we'll be doing the outside. He hasn't been available, and we'll start it in the next two weeks.
Great. That's terrific. I'm sorry, is he doing the inside as well?
No, this is just right now, the outside.
Okay, and then we'll do...
We'll work on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Any new business before the town?
Well, the only thing I, the only thing I don't know whether this should be new business or not, but there's a question about what constitutes a, for the purposes of giving people residential rates for the recreation program. It was brought up by the fact that one of the people who wanted to get a pool pass has a two-month lease to live in the village, in a rental apartment against her house. And the question is, is two months enough to count somebody as a resident? It should be months, it should be six months, you know, but there isn't any policy yet. My inclination is to say two months is fine, you know, let's give them a residential rate. Two weeks, probably not enough time, you know.
Is it residency like a legal thing, and doesn't it, don't you have to have more than half a year someplace?
I don't know. Maybe we don't have...
Certainly not for this purpose.
And the other thing is, I would caution about doing anything until we've, we're in a budget season already. You know, we, I think we have to look at it if you guys want to.
Well, there's one specific case, which is a person wanted a pool pass, they have a two-month lease, they showed it to us, and the rep department doesn't know what to do.
I mean, they're not a rep, you know, I don't, I don't want to, personally, I don't think we should open this can of worms in it mid-year, you know.
Well, that suggests we have a policy now, and it is you have to be a permanent resident in order to get the...
Yeah.
And if that's the policy, that's fine.
Well, we've had practice before where people who live in Red Hook and send their cool kids to school there say that they live here for the summer, and we've said, no, that doesn't wash. You're either a resident here or you're a resident there. So while we don't necessarily have a policy, we have past practice.
And when grandparents have grandchildren in the year or so.
The kids are not residents, they're residents elsewhere. If you want to form a policy, that's fine, but we have a past practice that I think dictates that you're either a resident here or you're not.
It sounds like the past practice has become policy, and I think that's fine.
Okay, so it's permanent residency is what I'm hearing.
I'll make sure we keep enforcing that.
We can certainly codify something.
I think it's better.
And also, are we looking at residency in terms of our, some zoning law? Didn't we kick that to the zoning review group, or didn't Michael Trimble bring that up, that we would need to define that because of some zoning laws with short-term, I can't remember what it is.
I don't recall it, but I would say that one of the first things you learn in law school is that a word can have different meanings in different contexts. And we can say that for this purpose, a permanent resident is somebody who's permanently going to have a different purpose, and I have a different meaning to it. And I'm not troubled by that.
Okay.
As long as we're clear.
Okay. Or we can make it the same, or we can define it differently.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I'll take a one.
Okay. Maybe you want to talk to Warren when he's back.
I will.
All right, thanks. Any new business before the town? We have a discussion item for the dog park on tab nine. I know we have some people here who are interested, so we've been saying that Dog Park hasn't been successful, and that the model that was put forth when we did it in 2012, 2013, where it was supposed to be volunteer-run, has not come to fruition. I think in 2013, 2014, we had, I don't know, 100 paying residents who came and got their permits. And then I think in 2015, it dropped off to maybe 10, and 2016, maybe 10, and this year, one, except the clerks have turned away. A couple of people saying that they, you know, don't pay, we don't know what's going to be happening. So for us, it's, I think, a challenge for maintaining it, mowing it and weed whacking it every week, and plowing it after every storm, and taking away the trash, and enforcing the laws. This was a joint park with the Town of Red Hook on our property. So I'm just gonna jump ahead to say that, you know, because we have great relationships with our neighbors, Supervisor McKeon and I have been talking about this, and I think Supervisor McKeon is going to talk to his town board about taking over the operation of the Dog Park. He asked that we would consider maintaining the insurance, we would have an intermunicipal agreement to give it a year or two-year try, we would no longer collect fees, and the Town of Red Hook would maintain it.
Our residents would be allowed to use it in Red Hook?
Yeah. I think anybody. As a benefit for living in these two beautiful towns, we would open it up. For us, the problem is enforcement and maintenance. So I think we'd make it a come-at-your-own-risk. There would be no enforcement because there would be no permits, and Red Hook would maintain it. I thought that that was like very generous and fantastic of them, since we only have one full-time maintenance person, and I said I'd talk to you about that.
I think it's great. It solves our problem.
Yeah, it solves our problem. We're working together, and we're still providing something that a lot of residents, Rhinebeck, Red Hook, and people, you know, I mean, people who come are from far away too. There are lots of High Falls, Ellen E. Villes, you know, Hyde Park, Statsburg, Myland. So did you want to speak at all? Are you Dog Park fans, or?
Yeah, I think that covers it. There's some questions for us, so. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
It's a steward.
What?
A steward.
Well, originally, there were supposed to be stewards in the park, like there are at Burger Hill, volunteers who sign up to manage the care of it, and it never came to fruition. So that's why it's easy to build something, you can always get a grant to build something, and then the challenge is how to maintain it, and that's been our challenge. So I think if we turn this to a come-at-your-own-risk and clean up after yourself, and there's no enforcement, and the Town of Red Hook maintains it, you know, I think we should try to...
So you could go with doggy bags and...
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. And I don't know that we would if we moved to not maintain, you know, but I also told Red Hook that I would speak to you about us drawing up the IMA, since they were taking it over.
We would carry insurance.
Yeah, it's on our property, so I think we should still carry the insurance. It's on the Town of Rhinebeck property located in the Town of Red Hook. So it's covered anyway. What do you think of that? Yes? Okay. So we can talk to Warren about an IMA and put it on our next agenda and look at revising the rules. Ed, I know that Supervisor Robert has some questions about, there's a goalpost back there, and maybe you could, yeah, you and Bobby could speak with them about some questions he has about the history of the property. All right? Okay, that's good?
Thank you.
Sure. Sure. Is there any help with comment on any non-agenda items? I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session to speak about the employment of a particular person. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. We'll be back. Thanks, everybody.